Welcome to the Board of Education's August 7, 2025 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Morgan.
(inaudible). My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few announcements. On behalf of the Board, I hope that all of our students, families, and staff members had a wonderful first half day of school today. I know my own kids had a fun day today. Our next policy review meeting will be held on Friday, August 22 at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. And Board members, TSBAs Fall District East Meeting will be held in Campbell County at Valley View Elementary School on Tuesday, August 26 from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. She'll be reaching out to us, but please remember to let Terry know if you would like to attend. And just as a reminder, item 5C-13 was withdrawn. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Ms. Terry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5, Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6A, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-191. Misbehaviors and disciplinary options as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Oh, yes, Albert.
Oh, hi. Um, I wanted to express a bit of concern about this policy, uh, just because when I've brought it up to some of the students that I've been talking to, they're kind of surprised that a potential violation of Policy 240 may result the suspension that's outlined in, um, disciplinary, like, Option C. And I was just wondering if we could spend a little bit of time talking about potentially adding a provision in the disciplinary options where, um, a violation of 240 has its own guidelines and, uh, consequences just for that, uh, because I just think there's a pretty big discrepancy between some of the things outlined in J-191 versus J-240.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Albert.
I think Albert brings up some really great points, and I'm curious if that would be a part of the procedures and if we know, uh, what those, if those procedures are outlined yet.
Ms. Lautner?
Uh, Ms. Bike, Madam Chair, Albert, um, members of the Board. So, we could absolutely look at adding some specificity, um, in an administrative procedure. I will say that Dr. Brown has a group of principles that he plans on engaging over the course of this year, just in looking at where some specificity and some clarity can benefit this policy, um, in terms of whether that's provisions to the policy that are brought back to the Board, or if those are, uh, points of clarity that are raised in a procedure. I think it's still too soon to tell exactly what that committee is going to recommend, but that's something we could bring to that work. I will add, just in looking at, uh, the red lines and what's been proposed in the policy in front of you all, that there is some historical language there that's been preserved. So, this is a discipline code that predates the changes to J-240. So, this is always, there's always been a violation, um, present, uh, under this discipline code for inappropriate or improper use of electronic devices. In the past, that inappropriate or improper use, um, has been an offense that this policy has, uh, labeled as a, uh, an offenses warranted, um, a B or C intervention. So, that would, uh, be an offense that could escalate to suspension if necessary, if you follow that progressive discipline within the policy. The request from administrators following the change to Policy J-240 was actually to add the option for a warning. So, to add that A-level intervention, um, for all of the reasons you outlined, right? J-240 has changed, um, and so this idea that there could be a violation with an electronic device that is just having that cellphone out of area or outside of the appropriate times, that's why the A intervention, um, was added, to acknowledge the fact that that's a lesser offense that warrants a lesser consequence. Um, so I don't know if that helps in the discussion, but that was the conversation with administrators that led to this proposed change.
What kind of offense would lead to the, what looks like, uh, Tier 2 suspension out of school under 10 days?
Thank you, Ms. Bike, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Um, so, as Ms. Lautner mentioned, it, you know, we use a progressive discipline model. So, obviously, um, and I would go as far as to say, I don't know that a violation of the wireless communication device would ever result in a suspension unless that was taken to another level. So, for example, you have your phone out and you're requested to put it up and you refuse. Well, now, we're talking about insubordination. We're not really talking about the phone anymore. Um, so I don't know that having the phone itself would ever lead to a suspension unless maybe I've got my phone out recording a fight, which would be, again, uh, contributing to negative school culture and, you know, there would be a higher consequence for that, not, not actually the possession of the phone, but what am I doing with the phone? You know, am I, you know, I know previously that, that improper use was, was really where that Level B and C came in, not so much the possession of it, which now has kind of been lumped together with this new, um, wireless communication device policy. So, I, I would say, again, from my experiences as being a principal for 17 years, you know, if, if we had a phone, I would never suspend a child for having a phone. Um, and that would be the guidance, I would think. And, and again, I think to your point, why principals requested that we added the A code because it used to be only B and C. So, we, we did, really what we did here is we added some leniency to the policy to allow for more, um, warnings and those type of things and conversation, uh, versus jumping right to, well, that's a Level B response, which is, uh, you know, a, a day of, you know, ATS or, or, you know, whatever the options are. But I'll also say, too, if you read the last line at the, at the bottom of the introductory section to J-191, any offense is at the discretion of the principal. So, you know, they always have the ability to do less or more depending on the, the situation and the severity of the behaviors that are involved.
Um, so, given that information, it feels like we don't need that to be a yes and that that could be a no, and we would still have all the options that we plan. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, I don't guess you have to have it, but I think principals felt better adding the A, uh, response option to it.
Oh, so the A response, I guess I'm reading that, um, there, the columns are independent of each other. Is that incorrect?
I don't have it in front of me.
Sorry.
But, go ahead, Ms. Lautner.
I could, or...
Go ahead. No, you're good. I was just gonna help navigate where it is, so go ahead.
So, I could hop in and say that you're correct in saying that if we made no change whatsoever, could administrators choose to issue a lesser consequence? Absolutely. Could they choose to issue, um, a more severe consequence if they felt the situation warranted it? To Dr. Brown's point, given the way the policy is written now, the answer is yes. The request coming from administrators was twofold. Um, one was just to create that clarity and consistency across the district. They were already saying across the board exactly what Dr. Brown has said, you know, just having that cellphone out of area, that's, that's an offense that warrants a warning, right? And so, if we already know that's the case, we already know that that's true across the district, going ahead and adding that lesser intervention, um, option was just clear and provided some consistency district-wide. I think the other reason for the ask was to give families that sense of, um, security and knowing that just having a cellphone and that initial violation wasn't going to potentially result in a B or a C consequence, if I'm an administrator who likes to implement the policy exactly as it's written and I don't like to exercise, um, you know, that autonomy that the policy provides to me. So, again, it just kind of was, the impetus there was to add that lesser, um, lesser intervention as an option across the district and to be really clear and transparent in the fact that we do believe that those, at least Policy J-240 violations, would, uh, result in a warning and not in one of those higher consequences.
Oh, I completely agree, like, having the A, B, and C options. So, I'm not arguing with adding the A option, um, just more so that kind of middle column where it's the, um, suspension out of school under 10 days. It feels like if you have a student that's abusing a cellphone policy, that, um, an out-of-school suspension is not really gonna help with a cellphone situation or mobile device.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Bike. And I, I would say that goes back to what I was saying before. It's about the use of the device at that point, not necessarily the possession of it, but...
But that would move into a different category, right?
But it's still, it would be like, so, let's say, for example, the, the example I used, two kids getting a, a fight at school and, and a group of students has their, have their phones out, recording it so they can post it to social media. So, those are instances where we would probably take a hard stand, and I can tell you, as, again, as a former principal, we made it very clear to our students, if you film students fighting and you're encouraging that kind of behavior, then there will be a consequence. And sometimes that was a suspension. So, again, that's, that's the improper use, or in this case, the now electronic device violation, where we might go to a Level B or C because we're saying, it's not really that you have the phone in your hand, but I was videoing and, and having a negative impact on our school's culture and, you know, trying to really put a stop to those types of behaviors.
No, I completely understand, and I think there have been more than just fights that, um, have been inappropriate use for cellphones. Um, I guess I was maybe misinterpreting a little bit, thinking that there was another line that encompassed kind of that type of use.
So, I think the conversation Monday was around, like, um, if I remember, Albert, possibly what you had shared, um, maybe talking about bullying and harassment, I feel like I heard that, that does have its own code. Um, so, there are certain ways in which you may commit an infraction, uh, with a cellphone that incites a different disciplinary code, but you also may, um, you know, use a device improperly or inappropriately, and that's where this code has historically picked up and been used, and it's in circumstances like the one that Dr. Brown just identified. So, we have expanded this code to also include, uh, just having those devices out of area. So, really, there are two different, um, infractions that could be committed here. They're all just related to electronic devices. Does that make sense? There's that inappropriate and improper use, but then there's also a violation of Policy J-240. So, those violations of Policy J-240, that's really probably where we're gonna start with the A, um, consequence. If we are using the device inappropriately or improperly, that may escalate to a B or a C consequence. If we are using the device for bullying and harassment, that's probably going to fall under a different discipline code altogether.
Um, that, that, that makes sense. Um, I guess for me, I see if we're moving to different discipline codes, then it feels like that could still be a no. Were there administrators that said that they would like that to stay a yes? I guess, like, I'm, my concern is that, you know, previous to our, our new, um, cellphone policy and that limited use, I know that I can see my, in my own kids, like, they struggle with, you know, they have devices and I try to limit their time as best possible, but I still get some behavioral issues and stuff like that. My kids are only allowed 30 minutes a day, and I know there are other situations where, you know, kids can be on it all day long and then they have to come to school, and I think someone had brought up, like, withdrawal and things like that. I think that we're probably going to see some behavioral issues, and so it would be my fear, and I think other people's fear, that, um, those behavioral issues that could be bigger, especially amongst, um, older students, that that wouldn't cause them to be suspended.
Thank you, Ms. Bike. Um, yeah, again, I think, I think what we're talking about here is, i- it's always been a yes in the column, um, and really, I think now with the changes to 240, we're adding that in as while we added the A to it, but I think those circumstances that we've always had, where there's been an improper use of that wireless communication device, and again, it's not, not about even the, the behaviors that follow, if, if the, if this is the trigger and that is an, you know, antecedent to some behavior, um, then I think we still would deal with that behavior and, and, and it would be commu-, uh, classified possibly as something else. Um, but I think specifically, we're talking about instances where you take an electronic device and you are doing something improper with it that you could be suspended for, not, not the possession of it, like, the recording of someone in a fight in a bathroom, it may, it may lead to other things as well. But, again, that, if that's the action that we can't classify as another thing, um, 'cause you're, you're using the phone improperly, then I think this just allows principals, if they choose to, to suspend for those types of behaviors, that may not be able to be classified as something else.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, I'm curious if it's possible for us to, oh, well, are we gonna be tracking any sort of disciplinary actions, um, in regards to, uh, wireless communication devices?
Yes, ma'am. We do track all discipline incidents as well as consequences for those, and on a monthly basis, those reports are given, uh, Steve Rutter and Ms. Lautner's division, um, he, he sends a, a monthly report to principals so that they can see what are the things that your students are struggling with individually, which students are those, so that they can intervene, and we can develop plans and those types of things. But yes, that is data that we provide on a monthly basis to principals at their schools so that they know specifically, you know, and, and it's, it's a good tool for them as well, 'cause they may see that they're over-identifying something, or we've really got a problem here, or we're really suspending too much for this, we need to intervene somehow. So, um, you know, there's lots of great information in that for students, for administrators, and then also for teachers, because you could also see if a certain teacher seems to be identifying a behavior more so than others, and so where, where's the disconnect there? Um, and, you know, that's probably when my, my division would step in and school culture would go and provide some training and those kind of things to try to help them identify, you know, how they can better respond to those types of situations outside of suspension, 'cause, you know, we all know our, our number one goal is to keep kids in, in the classroom and the tier-one instruction so that they are able to achieve and, and get the education they come to school every day for.
But, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. Um, then, with that, um, since you were already kind of getting these reports, would it be possible to parse out the, the cellphone disciplinary actions and maybe for the first three months of school, report that to the Board?
That would be possible to an extent, so, um, and Dr. Wilson and I were just having this conversation. The report would be constrained to incidents that received a consequence, um, that would be logged in Aspen. So, what you will see, uh, potentially attached to this code would be those, uh, consequences that are probably being given for inappropriate and improper use, because just those warnings that are issued, because the device is being used out of area, you know, that's not really gonna be picked up, because we're not going to enter that into Aspen. It's a passive warning, um, and everyone goes about their day, and so, yes, absolutely, um, we could potentially provide those reports to the Board. I just want to be clear on kind of what would be included and what wouldn't be included.
Would a suspension that gets logged in Aspen?
Oh, a suspension would, yes.
Yeah. So, I think that that would be, I wouldn't assume that every little thing would be logged.
Okay, good. As long as that assumption wasn't there, absolutely.
Yeah. If it, if it was taken away and given back to the student, I don't need to know that.
Yeah. But that is something to keep in mind when we talk about those reports, is that there is generally a body of intervention, um, that precedes, uh, a consequence that is not present, right? Um, simply because every little exchange is not logged, but as long as that, that caveat is there and that understanding is present, that's, that is absolutely something we could provide.
Would it be broken up in elementary, middle, and high school, and then potentially regions or districts?
So, we would really probably need to take a look at the number of incidents. Um, we do have an obligation to protect students, and so sometimes, you know, when a number of incidents falls below a certain threshold, we move into identifiable territory. Absent of that, then yes, I mean, we would have the ability to potentially break up and take a look at that, um, that data in different ways.
Yeah. I wouldn't want to identify any students, but yeah, that would be great to have. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Christie?
Do we need to approve this on first reading? I think we had that discussion. Was that the desire?
I would say that is the desire of our administrators, just to begin the year with that clarity and also that opportunity to have that lower-level consequence.
So, I will amend my motion to approve on first reading.
Second as well, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. Any more discussion on this item? All right, well, why don't we go ahead and vote on it? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
7A, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox County Health Department and receipt of funding up to $648,195.89 for the in-school health program for the term of July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved Tennessee Department of Education Fiscal Year 2026 CTE Perkins Reserve Grant in the amount of $50,000. in the amount of $50,000.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved teaching with primary resources southern region at Middle Tennessee State University grant in the amount of $24,915.86 for the KCS Social Studies Department.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved Melissa's Hope Foundation Grant in the amount of $50,000 for Dogwood Elementary School.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approved TBA uplift grant in the amount of $10,000 for Green Magnet Academy.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, approved grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for receipt of an aeronautics division 2025 aviation education grant in the amount of $20,000 for Powell High School.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7G, approved City of Knoxville grant in the amount of $1,700 for West High School.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by, was that you, Ms. Christie? Ms. Christie? Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approved contract with Jenkins &amp; Styles LLC for the construction of additions and renovations to Hall's Middle School in the amount of $13,122,000.
A motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Mr. Wright. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved voice terms and conditions with United Data Technologies through a TIPS cooperative contract for the provision of voice-over IP telephone services at an approximate annual cost of $415,000.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approved contract with KaraSoft Technology Corporation for cloud analytics, data warehouse, and dashboard services for the term of August 1, 2025, through July 31, 2028, at an annual cost of $331,922.40.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved contracts with Instruction Partners, Kids First Education LLC, Marzano Research, National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, Pivot School Improvement Leaders, and TNTP Incorporated for provision of evidence-based instruction strategies consulting for the term of September 1, 2025, through August 31, 2026, which may be extended for four additional years.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approved appointment of Knox County Board of Education Collaborative Conference and Management Team.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Bike. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approved school construction capital improvement plan budget line item transfer in the amount of $449,558 from Laundale Elementary School project account to the Title IX Solutions project account.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approved capital improvement plan budget line item transfer in the amount of $4200,000 from the Sturkey Elementary School project to the Hall's Middle School project.
A motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approved memorandum of understanding with Adopt a School Partnership Doing Business as Partners in Education Foundation regarding operation of the Teacher Supply Depot.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9E, consideration of resolution requesting a commitment from the state of Tennessee to continue to fund public education.
A motion by Ms. Bike, a second by Reverend Butler. And we do have a public forum speaker before we begin discussion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Lance Mchold. If you'll state your name, county residence, she'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lance Mchold, Knox County. I come to, for you to urge you to pass the resolution for continuation of funds. This is, this is a moral issue. We are taught that we have two responsibilities, to love God and to love our neighbor. We're also taught that the neighbors we should be most concerned about are the least of these, the ones with the least advantages. And the federal funds that we get almost exclusively goes to serve the low-income kids, the kids with disabilities. That's where it comes from. And if that were to leave, and then, you know, it's hard to believe we're saying this, because in years past, we wouldn't even think of it happening, but now the world has changed, and it's quite conceivable that, that those funds would go away. And for us to lose about 10% of our funding, I'm not sure what the number is, it doesn't really matter, and all that money that's really going to serve the kids who need the most, to do nothing would be a moral abdication of your responsibilities. Now, none of us is ready to, to pick up the millions of dollars it would take to do that. So it calls on us to do whatever we can to make sure that if that were to happen, that something would do. And the state of Tennessee obviously has much more money than us. This resolution makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, the, the crisis that motivated it has passed, it seems, but we know the budgets that are being proposed in Washington, and we know that cutting funds for public edu, federal funds for public education is on the agenda. It's time to speak to our, our state legislature and tell them, you know, look, if they cut it, we're going to be looking to you, because we don't have any other place to get it. And if we don't get it, it's the least of these, our children, who will be the ones to suffer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes the public forum.
Thank you. We'll begin our discussion. Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I'm not going to speak too long on this, because I already spoke on Monday about it, but just to elaborate that, I think these funds are vital to our success and to our ability to compete with other states, and especially in the support of IDEA, which I know wasn't necessarily one of the ones that were frozen, but I know that that has been thrown out there. But also, in the other areas of supporting our teachers and English, like, we've all talked about third-grade retention so much. And I think it's just really important that we let our state know that these funds are really important to us, and that they, we would like them to advocate on our behalf. Thank you.
Reverend Butler?
Well, since I seconded it, I felt like I needed to speak to it. I second it because I feel like it's something that we at least need to talk about, especially with the, how our, our district budget was affected by the freezing of those budget line items that affected the title programs that caused us to have to change the lives of a lot of our employees. Can't remember the exact number, but I know it was more than one. And I know it was, that their lives changed. The number, the amount of money that they make, the time that they work. Some of them, I understand, changed from one specific career position to another. Some of them are working in areas that they have not worked in before in a long time. It changed their lives in, 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 in a blink of an eye. And, and then our district, I mentioned Monday, turned obstacle into a opportunity, but they had to do it in such a short amount of time. And some of the decisions they made was not a right or wrong answer, it was just the best that they could do. So when we change, when budget considerations come, or when we, even when we look at working the budget, we spend time and effort with what we know we're going to receive, what we've been told we're going to receive, and then we vote on it, and we had a good, solid budget. And a decision was made, and that was not ours to make, that changed that. So I, I do agree that I think we need to have some assurance that when we do a budget, that we don't look, what, a few weeks later? And we have to do something that is devastating to so many people. So I would like, and I would like for us to look at that, to look at the reason why, where, all the reasons why we're doing it. One of those reasons was enlisted here is that I heard someone say on Monday night, we have urban, suburban, and rural communities. And so all of these communities that we have in Knox County is also all over the state, and every one of them had, was affected by those budget cuts. The second thing that I would see is that we, in the, therefore is resolved, that we are respectfully urging, we're not saying, telling them what to do, we're saying, this is what we'd like to see you do. I'm not sure if we want to ask for immediate action, at, at least immediate discussion or immediate consideration of this, because it can happen again. Next year, not too many months from now, we're going to be looking at a budget process again. And I would like to feel somewhat secure that, that the dollars that we're planning to spend on these so important issues, because if we're spending that much dollars on them, they have to be that important, that we're going to have a solid, I think superintendent said, we, we got to look for beyond the soft money. And so we need some more hard money, because that soft money didn't work for us this time. So where the hard money is going to come from? If it's not going to come from the federal government, then it comes from the state government. So, so that, and the last thing, perhaps not the last thing I say, is that my understanding in talking with one of our state legislators is that there was a, and I'm, and my memory is saying a task force that came out of the Education Committee that looked at these issues. Am I right?
They still are.
They still are. So this is not something that they're not already looking at. So it may be, we're just saying confirmation of, yeah, we'd like for you to take a look at this. Obviously, it's their decision, we understand that. But we're just simply saying, and I'll be honest with you, I really didn't think that I would, I would have a comment on this until this week, when I visited with about eight of my schools, and listening to staff talk about how their lives changed. And my thought was, when I was working in a, in a quasi-government position, and the, the federal government budget was not approved in October. And so we had folk who worked alongside me at desk, that went on furlough or had to leave their job and go to something else, because they couldn't live off furlough. So this is a real issue that has experienced, that, that we, real people in our community are experiencing. And I think as a board, we're just simply saying to the state, yes, we agree, we need to look at some, at some hard money, because the soft money is not, is not, we can't depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Anyone else? Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the intention of the resolution. I am wondering if this is not something that would fall more as a legislative priority? I don't know who could give clarity on that. It seems like something, when we're working on our legislative priorities, that we would, that we would share, rather than doing it right now, and the legislature's not in session.
Steve, do you want to speak to that?
I do think that if we want this to happen, we will have to make it a legislative priority, kind of a yearly thing, just because, because right now, they won't do anything with this resolution, because there's not a need for them to do anything. And what they can do is appoint a committee, which they already have, and they're already doing. So I think that this conversation will probably come up again and again, and maybe something that, we take this resolution and shorten it down into some form that fits a legislative priority at some point, and add it in January, maybe year after year, maybe it changes a little bit. But yeah, I could see that happening.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you. I did actually go back and forth as to whether this was just a legislative priority. Obviously, so I started working on this as soon as I got the notice that, you know, everything was up in the air. And in order for it to be sent to TSBA, to make it a part of their legislative priority, we would have to pass this before September. And that would be my goal. It would be my goal that this would also be a part of, that we would take some verbiage from this, as to what the whole board felt were appropriate, and make that a part of our own legislative priorities, but also to make it a part of TSBA's. That's something that I did with the third-grade retention resolution. And it was pretty well-received, and it was really a great opportunity to work with TSBA, and they did make that a part of their legislative priorities. And then, you know, especially since that is kind of, we're looking at them to be our lobbyists, because we don't currently have a lobbyist, that, that is kind of our avenue to have some action. So that's the reason, kind of why I didn't wait. And I have immediate action in there, because when, because we all know the time that it takes to get this through all the people, and to tweak it and make sure it's like just right, we hadn't yet been notified that we were going to receive the funds. So I would be amenable to taking out immediate action, or replacing that with some other verbiage, if someone has a preference on that. But otherwise, that, that was kind of my thought process.
Anyone else?
I do appreciate this resolution, Ms. Bike. Thank you for bringing it up. I do agree with you, Ms. Morgan. I do think it seems more of a legislative priority. And, you know, there was a delay in the freezing of funds, but then they released those funds after a few days. So for me, it's a moot point, so I'll probably be voting no on this. But that's just my, my thoughts on that. Ms. Bike?
I completely agree with you in some ways, but I think if you asked our staff and teachers who were reassigned, the nearly 30, that they would not think this was a moot point. Or the parents that were devastated for the gifted and talented services that they receive, and how that had to be upended last minute, I think that they would also not think that this was a moot point.
Which I totally understand, and I am thankful for Ms., Dr. Phillips for, for working on the opportunity to make our GT program even more robust. I'm excited to see how that pans out for the next year.
Is there any more discussion? Yes, Ms. Tim, oh, looked like you, okay, Ms. Timbleton.
Wow, your peripheral vision was on point. I want to thank you for putting this together. I think that what happened was devastating to so many people, and it affected everybody in one way or another in all of our districts. So we've all been impacted by the loss of that federal funding. And frankly, we don't know when this might happen again. And so I think having something written that is approved and already waiting on the desk of our legislators upon their return to say, please fight for the funding if this happens again, because hopefully it will not. But it did require fighting to get it back from across the nation. So to all of those people, thank you. And I think it's important to go ahead and have it written, approved, in their hands, so that we're not behind the eight ball later.
Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, I, I made, I second the motion so that we can have a discussion. I'm, I'm comfortable if we had it in a legislative format, and if we could get it to TSBA as well. And so, because I think that, for me, the practical part of it is, is that you do it in the best manner that's going to be heard and be considered. It's their decision, we can't make that decision for them, but we, we want them to hear us, and we want them to consider what we've asked about. And so if that's the legislative agenda, then I'm fine with that. But I just want to- But I just want to make sure that we have something that will address the issue of the soft money, as well as the hurt and, and, and still the, the things that families and our employees and others are going through. So I'm not sure what kind of, what that does, other than just carrying the motion, and then see what we go from there. But I think that, if that's one of the things, I would be pleased with that.
Ms. Bike?
I think maybe this is a question for Gary. It was my understanding that, in order to send it to TSBA, the board would have to pass it. Is that correct?
Thank you, Ms. Bike, and Madam Chair. So if, if you want TSBA to adopt this as a Knox County Board of Education resolution, in other words, you know, voted on and fully approved, then yes, that would be correct. I mean, individually, you could say that you support this, but if you wanted TSBA to be able to say that the whole board, this is, this is an action of the board, then yes, it has to be voted upon and approved.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I understood, too, and that's what, you know, I always love the support of my fellow board members, so I think that's why I brought this, instead of just working directly with TSBA.
Ms. Christie?
Not specifically about this resolution itself, but Dr. Roswick, could you or Ms. Himmelgarn speak a little bit to, I guess my concern is, and it always is, be it at the school level or the district level, is when we use these types of funds to pay for staffing, there's always that risk. And if we are looking at ways to maybe not use so many, so much of the federal dollars for actual human resource staffing decisions.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was, I wanted this same discussion. So, Dr. Roswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Christie, I'll jump in. Jennifer, you can clean it up, all right? You know, it is a great, I think, you know, lessons learned from us, I think the practice of the district has been to use some of those federal dollars, probably like general purpose dollars, just because, I mean, that has been our practice. I think that's what our staff took away when the dollars had been reinstated. We actually took a half a day in the summer and went away to kind of lay out guidelines moving forward, before we turned it over to people like Dr. Phillips, and as they, you know, we'll get the ins and outs of what we do forward. And some of our guidelines moving forward were that, not people, but contracts, right? Trainings, bandwidth bills, like those kinds of things. That's really what a lot of these dollars, now, let me separate some, that's not necessarily IDEA dollars for sped, or Title I dollars, like some of those kinds of things, but some of the ones that actually we saw, Title II for professional development, Title III, we did have a lot of people in our Title II professional development one. And so that was kind of what we're looking at for this reinstatement and use of these dollars, are, are there ways that we can do, like contracted work with a, with a group that can come in and train, maybe around literacy, as opposed to people being in that? Far less volatile then, when you lose that, you, you maybe cut some of the supports back, or add some of the supports back, but really think that's probably the way that we're trying to move forward with these. Again, not faulting, I mean, this has kind of been the practice of the district for a long time, because I think those kind of have been guaranteed dollars. They'll fluctuate on an annual basis, you know, a few percentage points here or there, but for the most part, we've been okay. So I do think it will change our practice moving forward, to try to make them more, year-to-year, things that we can use without impacting people. I don't know if you'd add to it, Ms. Himmelgarn?
Madam Chair, Ms. Christie, just echo that. Each of, each of these federal dollars are allocated to the district to supplement what the general purpose budget provides. And they're each allocated for specific reasons, depending on which, which title they're under. Sometimes a person can serve that specific purpose, but, but sometimes something else could as well. And what this, this has been a good reminder for us, that, that not funding so many personnel out of these dollars will make it less impactful to people if the dollars change.
Thank you. I think that's wise, especially knowing the state has the committee that's already exploring if we should be accepting all the federal dollars that the state accepts. So thank you for that.
Thanks for bringing up that discussion point, Ms. Christie. Is there any more discussion? Oh, Ms. Morgan?
I think just, I appreciate your answer, Ms. Bike, and I do like the, I like what you're saying here in this, and I certainly agree that it was hard, very difficult, hard doesn't even begin to hit on how it was to lose this funding. I find myself wanting to make sure that when we do put a resolution forward with the whole board's support, that it's a strong, really saying something resolution. And the state has already got the committee formed to look at this, as well as these dollars being back, and while, of course, we could lose them at any time, I do think it's great that, at the district level, we're looking at using, how we allocate our, our federal dollars, being very intentional, so that we're not losing people. As you all just ducked your eyes, so I can, Ms. Himmelgarn. And so, in light of all of those things, following, along with Ms. Henderson, I think I'll be voting no on this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Bike?
I'm honestly surprised to hear you say that it's not a strong ask. I think that it's definitely been a theme with this board, that we don't want to tell our legislature what to do. But there has not been a resolution yet from any board across the state of Tennessee that has made this ask, and I think as the third-largest district in the state of Tennessee that was at risk of losing $3.8 million, that this is in accordance and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bike. Anyone else? All right, seeing there is not, Ms. Coney, can you please do a roll call there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Templeton?
Yes.
Ms. Faltinow Ridley?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Triplet?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Ms. Christie?
No.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
That's four yes votes and five no votes.
All right, motion fails. Moving on to public forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Candace Banister. Candace, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. When will you hold the person who bullied, harassed, intimidated, and emotionally abused our son accountable? Daily, the students from kindergarten to 12th grade, and staff members in every school across Knox County schools are held accountable for their actions, but not this guy. He was promoted to a position called Chief of Schools. As teachers, we are encouraged and expected to keep records on each of our students for academic progress, but also for any other concern we have. The teachers from at least two of his six schools in nine years kept records of their concerns regarding this admin, and gave them to HR and leadership. Nothing happened. Then in the summer of 2019, 43 stakeholders wrote to share their concerns regarding this admin, and on the Friday before the students returned to school, he was moved from FHS to HR. In my community, we were thankful he had been moved, but apparently, no accompanying paperwork made it to his file at this very odd time for an administrative move. Where are all of these missing records? At that time, our family had an active lawsuit regarding his treatment of our son Will. I feel the reason for no accompanying paperwork is because we could request those records in an open records request. In fact, we did make a very extensive request for records in the fall of 2019, and to this day, none of those requests have been processed, and we still have not received any of those records. Exactly what is KCS's timeframe for providing requested records? In July of 2022, employees received the internal/external communications document, which encourages employees to be cautious about what is put in an email, as all emails are subject to being subpoenaed in a lawsuit or requested open records request. It then directs employees to routinely delete work-related emails. Are you okay with this system hiding and/or destroying records for those who would abuse, bully, harass, and intimidate students? Is this who you are? Because we hired an attorney when Will was suspended, met your attorney, Mr. Dupler, attended Will's hearing and appeal. It was Mr. Dupler who advocated for Will after those meetings. He met with the superintendent and told him what the system had gotten wrong. Will's attorney told us that he himself did not say a word in this meeting. The superintendent ordered Will back to school based on what he heard from Mr. Dupler. So what did the system do to address what Mr. Dupler pointed out? Where is the accountability for telling the admin to knock it off and leave Will alone? This admin, being the bully that he is, knowing that Will was on medication for anxiety, still went to all four of Will's classes within four days of his return to school, and stood over him for 10 to 15 minutes, signaling to Will, his classmates, and his teachers that Will was a problem, and he was not welcome there. Four weeks later, Will took his life, and our lives have never and will never be the same. Please, hold him accountable. And let me just say, it should never be the deputy law director's job to be the one to advocate for our students, though our family much appreciated Mr. Dupler's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo Sutton? Bo, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Bo Sutton, Knox County resident. As you know, since the last meeting, I have submitted evidence to the district attorney, all of you, state attorney general, Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, Knoxville Police Department, Knox County Sheriff's Department, about the falsification of records by Mr. Roswick. So I'm going to leave that at bay today. Today, we're going to be talking about you guys, okay? Now, I have some evidence, I had an open records request. So the first piece of evidence that I have relates to my information I submitted you. This is the request to hire Chad Brooks, okay? Coach Brooks was hired by administration, not Coach Brown, okay? Scott Shaver was hired by administration. HR sent an email to athletic director or principal, Scott Shaver is cleared to begin his position as assistant coach. Now, all of you know, teachers and coaches cannot hire, okay? Evidence is clear, okay? Yet it was put in a record, personnel record, which is public record, that Mr. Brown hired these individuals. You have the evidence he did. I have the, submitted you the job description. I'm Mr. Brown, as a teacher, not a supervisor, no supervisory responsibilities, and I laid out for you that he has no supervisory responsibilities. Knox County Board of Education policy G330, tenure, individuals involved in coaching shall be considered teachers first, coaches second. Personnel files, employee records, or public records. Here's the, here is the letter that went into Mr. Brown's personnel file, public record, that is false. Falsification of records, criminal offense. Knox County Board of Education policy states, "Your responsibilities, the constitutional and statutory duties of Board education include, except as otherwise provided in this title, dismiss teachers, principals, supervisors, and other employees upon sufficient proof of improper conduct." Y'all have that responsibility, and if you don't carry out, you're liable. Qualification duties of the Director of Schools, ensure appropriate administration of all Board policies. Develop administrative procedures to implement Board policy for items deemed necessary for the efficient operation of schools, and disseminate these procedures to the appropriate staff." You all know that he didn't hire and supervise these individuals. All right, criminal conspiracy, district attorney will look at that, who wrote that, who wrote the letter, and who was involved in the letter? Accessory after the fact, this is where you guys fall in. A person is an accessory after the fact, who after the commission of a felony, with knowledge of a reasonable ground to believe the offender has committed the felony, and with the intent to hinder the arrest, trial, conviction, or punishment of the offender, provides or aids in providing the offender with any means of avoiding arrest, trial, conviction, or punishment. Accessory after the fact is class C felony. The next documents I presented to you is, has to do with tort reform, or tort liability in the state of Tennessee, okay? Read that, and who's responsible, and your personal responsibility, wherever it will fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Resnick? Sheri, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Sheri Resnick, Knox County Schools. Good evening, I'm a seventeen, seventeen-year public educator, my kids are KCS graduates, and I care deeply about the success and support of our students, teachers, and schools. I want to address the recent position cuts, which coincided with the federal funding freeze, by sharing my story. In spring 2023, I was wrapping up my sixth year at Bearden High School, the school that my daughters attended in a place that felt like home. I was teaching science courses that I loved, and working nationally to support teachers as well. When the district facilitator role opened, I almost didn't apply. I was, I was comfortable and happy. But after reading the job description, I realized I wanted to grow my impact in this district, and I'm so glad that I applied. Over the past two years, I worked alongside an incredible team, preparing for what is now our implementation year for high-quality instructional materials and science. We supported early adopter cohorts, collaborated with national partners, designed professional learning, and they were all aligned to the coming shifts. In Region 4, the work was more personal. I walked along school leaders as we built our capacity together to lead the coming instructional change, worked to ease the burden on classroom teachers, supporting new staff, guiding PLCs, analyzing data, and trying, trying out new units together. Thank you to the teachers who took that leap with me, and to the principals, coaches, and teachers who shared how much that support meant, and how much it will be missed. Knox County is one of the only districts in Tennessee to adopt true high-quality science materials, K through 12. It's exciting, and it's backed by research. But curriculum alone isn't enough. These materials ask teachers to shift how they teach, how they question, and how they guide student learning. Ongoing embedded support is critical to success, and teachers deserve that. Without it, we risk our investment falling short of its potential. To quantify the impacts, last year, the facilitator-to-school ratio was close to 1 to 20, this year it will be 1 to 50. Despite this, many facilitators, myself included, were returned to the classroom just weeks before the school year began, filling the open positions, and often placed outside our certification areas. It's heartbreaking not to be able to continue supporting teachers in this critical moment. Mine is just one story, there are 27.5 others. While I was the newest member of our team, after the general funding cuts in the spring, many of the facilitators that were federally funded were the most veteran in their role. The timing and details of how this unfolded have left many questions about the process, and I fear that the next chapter in many of those stories will be outside of our district. This will be a loss without measure for our district. In addition, there's a real threat that this will discourage others from applying for roles like this in the future. To prioritize great educators in every school, I ask us to ask more questions, communicate with transparency, value educators' experience, and protect the progress we've made. We had a model that was working, let's rebuild it stronger and more sustainable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alexis Rhodes? Alexis, you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Alexis Rhodes, and I live in Knox County. Policy J359, private practitioners, was revised in July of '25. There was no public agenda item, no public discussion, no board vote, and for weeks, the revised policy wasn't even available online. I've requested multiple times that this matter be added to your agenda for public discussion and record, and those requests have just gone unanswered. You were made aware that administration changed your policy on July 3rd, and this is the fourth board meeting since then. Yet no public record exists of your decision, or is it a lack thereof, but I'm not sure, because again, you guys didn't vote on it. You knowingly allowed hundreds of parents and providers to submit students' medical documents without notifying the public or their parents of a change in who has access to those sensitive documents. This isn't about whether the change was well-intentioned. I would like to thank Dr. Brown for taking his time to discuss the administration side, and we've walked through that side of the process, but this is about how the board made this decision. You guys made it quietly, not in accordance with your own policy, and without the public transparency that state law requires. More importantly, this isn't an isolated incident. I knew that you would not discuss this at policy review, because I, myself, went to policy review. I rearranged my son's therapy schedule so that I could attend your policy review meeting, because that's the only way that I can have access to what you guys discussed there. Policy review meetings, where these decisions are shaped, are not recorded, no minutes are kept, agendas are not publicly posted, and it's a toss-up whether or not you guys even post a public notice forum. You claim that these are staff meetings, but your own words and meeting minutes, year after year, say otherwise. You've acknowledged that the board members participate in deliberations, decisions are made there, and that these sessions are your primary venue for policy discussions. That is public business, and the Tennessee Open Meetings Act ensures that the public has a right to witness it. KCS is not a private organization, board members are elected by the public, this is a public school district. Your policies, your procedures, and your transparency belong to the people of Knox County, and not just to the people sitting behind nameplates in this room. I have asked you all multiple times why KCS is not publicly making decisions on matters that affect, that affect- that affect, that affect the public, and I have continued to get no answer from any of you. So now I ask publicly, why do you continue to refuse to publicly conduct public business? Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.